I saw the transcription you didn't use one that I have.
How do you what? Oh, I just read the transcription.
Okay, alright.
So I get out of that.
Just exit out, okay.
Because then it's.
Yeah, David's gonna use it and that's fine.
Sometimes people speak quietly, but if they want to capture what they say.
Alright, so we have a forum. And Kim, thank you for. So Martha, you as vice chair, because Crystal's not here yet. I thought she was gonna come. I haven't gotten any.
I haven't received any.
Yeah, so maybe she's running a little late. And so now they're how those issues. But I thought we have, we have enough for forum. So Martha, why don't you kick us off? This will be your first time. I will help you through it.
Okay, yay.
Yes, while you gotta do it, is you gotta officially start the meeting. At the chair.
Alright. We're. We are here calling to order. Today's meeting on the nineteenth at nine thirty seven.
Thank you. On the agenda, it should be publicly invited to be heard. Amy, did you receive anybody? Okay, we did not receive anybody who wants to be here. We're not reviewing minutes at this meeting. We'll. We will do both the April and this meeting's minutes at the May meeting. Okay, what's the next thing on the agenda?
Continuing conversation about human services.
Alright Martha, I'm gonna start the conversation. Any questions before I start? Okay. Alright, so. I'm gonna, I'm gonna lay down some context. Mark wasn't here at our April meeting, and so. I'll catch him up on it. And then we will jump into the conversation. About what we're gonna do for twenty twenty six. And we'll also. Give you some. We did talk to our city manager about what was decided, and he had some feedback too, so. We will do that as well, but let me set the context, Martha, real quick. We've been having these conversations for over a couple of years now. He does an increase in requests and our. And need and the fact that our general fund amount is not keeping up with the. With the, the amounts of requests that we're seeing. It's very unlikely, based on. The city's budget, that we would get any kind of increase to three and a half percent or four percent. That's just very, very unlikely. And so what? What Christina and I did was we went before council and asked them for. Here's the things that this board has talked about. Here's the things that we've heard from nonprofits. What are your thoughts? And I have proposed three models that we hit in current from the, from the nonprofits and brought it before the board. And they've. The model was basically going into a cycle of funding a. Funding a priority area at a higher amount, so that agencies could apply for three or two year funding. We had multiple models there. And that would lock us into a cycle for between three years, four years, or up to six years. And so we had lively discussion on the, on April, at the April meeting. At the end of that meeting, and anybody from the board, if you wanna add more context for Mark, that's fine. By the way, all of the meetings are now on, on video, so you can always go to our city YouTube page and look at them. But by the end of the meeting, it was decided that due to the volatility of our, of our economy right now. That it was probably unwise to commit ourselves to any sort of cycle. That would have us committed for, for multiple years. We just don't know what's gonna happen. And so the board, we did a straw poll. It wasn't necessarily most gonna reach. We did a straw poll. The board felt good with that. But we also reviewed the human services need assessment, and the board felt. Hey, we need to be responsive and, oh, is that?
That's great.
That's what I thought, yay! Okay, you guys use elevator, right?
What's that?
Good.
No, he must be down the stairs. He willing to be down. He caught you at the bottom. Yes.
I just catching Martha, Crystal and then I'm on her man.
Yes. Delivery.
Yes, I'm just catching work up on the April fourteen meetings. Where we, where we decided something, so. So the board felt that we should respect and honor the, the human services need assessment. How do the human services need assessment? The three, we saw there were a lot of needs, of course. But the ones that were, the way that the human services assessment was done, it was done around, around population base. And the three that were most common around, around these populations were. Mental health. Food security and, and rent and mortgage assistance, right? Those are the three top things that came. And so. We decided that we wanted to honor those as we create our new priorities and. The other big difference is, in the past, we talked about this, in the past, our priority percentages were just guidelines. It weren't. They weren't. What's the word? Prescriptive, right? And I think the board feels that we wanna be more prescriptive. This year with the guy that was, this is why this comment is so important. Because whatever credentials we use, we will let our agencies know that this is all you have to apply for. Right? And so you have to apply for it. Okay, so that's kind of what this meeting is about. We decided not to do the cycle. We were gonna come in today and talk about. What percentages we wanna apply for twenty twenty six. I have a couple of models we can, but I have more paper if you want to do some more. Some more thinking, then we, we can, we can do that as well. And so then the other thing I wanted to give an update, Crystal had asked, why don't we do DFA with this funding?
Direct financing.
Direct, which is direct financing. And so I went and actually, I emailed Karen Hone and we had a conversation about it. And so a couple of things to note. One is, not that this isn't the, but it just wanna be. Our finance, I asked our financial policies person as well, what, what this money can be used for. And they. Our financials person sent us, sent me the, the financial policies. And it's pretty broad. It's set for, it has to be for program use. That doesn't mean DFA can't be part of a program, but it has to be for program use. And I always struggle with that, because I have some agencies that put in general operations, and I have to argue with them, okay? Tell me why funding this is, how is it in, how is it connected to program delivery, and they have to give me an explanation and stuff like that. So that's one thing. And then Karen told me that. The main reason that we didn't do DFA was up until, and this is, this is reason, up until twenty twenty two. We had a clause in our agreement that said, it was a state law at that time, HR reversed. That you could not give direct support to somebody who was unlawfully present. And so Karen had made, the board had made choice that, let's just. Cut that issue in the bud and say, no DFA. So. We can do DFA. We haven't because of that, but that changed, because that law changed in twenty twenty two. Now. We can have that conversations. I still have some concerns about DFA. Primarily. Come on in, Cory. Primarily, and not that we can't do, but here's all my concerns that I must think about. One is. You know, we want program outcomes. DFA is typically just program outputs. So how many families did we provide rent for this month, right? And so how do we track outcome for DFA? That's a concern that I have. I think we can do it, but I might figure out how we do that. The other piece too, that Christina was talking about, here's our concerns. Again, we can do this, but I wanna share my concerns. Other concern about DFA is. You know, the, the amount of DFA that's, that's in, in this community is much more than we have. We could put all of this money to DFA. Easily. We could put all one point four five, one point five, another one point whatever to DFA. The question that we have is. Is that the best way to use this money? Or where we're using it right now is for program cost primarily. Not exclusively, but primarily staff. Costs, right, to get the people that deliver the DFA, that get, or, or that help the, the person get the services they need. So those are, those are just two of our concerns, but we can have the conversation. And it's important, because if you look at, we'll get to this here in a second, but those are the top three, right? It is help with their mortgage or rent, right? That, that came out. And so I definitely acknowledge that that's a need. The question I have, and then we will discuss here in a bit, is. Is this the best place to solve that? We already do DFA, do another program that we do. And we just increased the amount there. You know. Is, is this the place to, that we have, we increased that amount by twenty six thousand this year, Christina did. So. So yeah, so that's kind of where I'm at right now. That's kind of the recap. That's the conversation we're having. Any other info from the board, and then we can, we can jump in, and I'll finish typing this.
Okay, I didn't know where you were. Did you just? Like what were the amounts last year or this year? Like compared to these?
Uh, I would need to get into my computer.
Alright, that's alright.
I can go get it though. So if you went to Teams. The Teams. We can tell them what the amounts were, because I did it by, now go to files. Oh, you gotta get to our human service. So the question is, how much did we spend on these priorities last year, correct?
Yeah, I was thinking that. It's some of, he better make changes a little more carefully, right? So somebody got a lot more last year than they could be.
So that's a good point, and if, if you see, so let me, let me start over here, and then we'll get to your question while she looks at us. So go under, are you in ours? Go back, no, what if you? Yes, now go to files. Go to twenty twenty five funding.
Five or four.
Five. For this year, are you talking about, you're talking about. Right now, so go, go down.
Also, look at the needs assessment, see what would.
Go to allocation metrics.
The, the highest priority on those areas in the higher.
And then I'll show you, where we can see how much. I did it on the side.
Okay.
So education and skill building got that much. Yeah, so, so let's, let's. Yes, we'll get to that in a second, but now we have it. Alright, so let's talk about, right, I'm gonna start right here. And it's, uh, it's, it's the, the yellow, the yellow. Sticky that says priority areas. Twenty twenty five approved. So if you can move it over so they can see it. Can you guys see that?
No, it's still, the camera is facing you all, not the opposite.
So try sharing again. That's just weird. That is not sharing. So hit share. And it says you can, you can share the whiteboard.
Okay, how about now?
No.
Martha, you can't see anything that's shared?
It said, sorry, you don't have access.
Oh, gosh.
And put it in the chat.
Yeah, let's do that. Copy the, the, copy the, the. The text and let's put it in the chat.
Just Ctrl C.
Ctrl A, Ctrl C. Go to.
Holy, holy, on the bottom, there's the chat right there, text message.
No, not that chat.
It's not that, that is, it is.
Oh, there it is. Okay.
Just not yell.
Yes, that's just not yell, alright. So it's like, and then copy the other one and do the same thing if you can. Okay, so she put in the actuals. The reason I use twenty twenty four actuals is because twenty twenty four is a little more. More representative. What happened in twenty twenty five is we had a major player had some issues in their back office. And not applied.
Keep going. I know, I know why they can't see it.
Okay. Alright, so that's why I used twenty twenty four actuals. But they were the same ones that we applied in twenty twenty five were the same. We didn't change it from twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five. So this is what we approved. Of the funding. This is what we actually spent of the funding. Alright, so we approved twenty five percent for housing stability. We only spent sixteen percent on housing stability programs. Helped them when they approved fifteen, we spent twenty. Education, we approved seventeen, we spent twenty six percent. And that's primarily because we, we had that. It would've been less if they would've applied. Self-sufficiency was close, food nutrition was close, and safety and justice were close.
So the, the years above, is that accurate then? I'm confused. It's, looks like it's retro.
So. This is what we approved.
In twenty twenty five?
Yeah, but it's the same thing as twenty twenty four.
Okay.
We had, we haven't changed this in twenty twenty three.
It says twenty twenty four actuals. Should that be twenty twenty five?
No, I didn't use twenty twenty five, because twenty twenty five, it was only seven percent, because that one agency did not apply.
Okay.
No, so we don't, no, it, it depends on which agencies comes for us for money. Yes. So we have a question. Martha.
I do have a question, because we have the priority areas. Three times listed as actuals, but did you say the budgeted were different? So the chat has the same thing listed three times. But it doesn't have what you're, you're comparing it to. Can you, I heard twenty five versus sixteen for housing stability. But can you just read those out loud? What you originally planned versus.
Oh yeah, you put all the actual ones.
I've just copied the, the post. It's over.
Oh, that's so weird, because copying the same one.
It's okay, it's just.
Weird.
It's hardly any numbers. Just read them out, if you wouldn't mind.
Yes, okay. So twenty twenty five and twenty twenty four approved. Housing stability was twenty five percent.
Okay.
Health and wellness was fifteen percent. Education was seventeen percent. Self-sufficiency and resilience twenty percent. Food and nutrition was thirteen percent. Safety and justice was ten percent. Those were what was approved, but again, we were only using as guidelines.
Great, got it, yeah.
And then. The actuals, what you have in your chat, right?
Yeah. Yeah, they're all good.
Okay. So. Again, I didn't use twenty twenty five actual, because it was skewed, I think. I think, I think education. Got more than they usually do because of the fact.
Probably off by a hundred thousand dollars.
We're off by a hundred thousand dollars. Okay. So I put those there, because when I created the priority areas for. This year for twenty twenty six, for this on cycle, I did it both based on, this was based off the approved. And this was based off of actual. Okay? And I assumed, again, I don't know, we may have more, we have, may have less. But for a nice even. Number, I said we were getting one point five million. That's my assumption, right?
Name it and claim it.
Name it and claim it, but we have, we are close. We have one, we have one point four nine, we have. One million four hundred ninety last year, so if we can just get ten thousand more dollars, we're there. We may get more. I don't know. There's another conversation that we're gonna have with council as well about ratios. But I'm gonna assume that we're, we're getting one point five, okay? So. This first proposed is based on the actuals, and here's the changes I did. Based on the human services, both even based on the human services needs top three. I think we'll go to the top three, we can, if you want to, but I just did the top three. Alright, so the top three, I left. Health and stability at twenty five, because we haven't gotten to, we haven't got to sixteen. To seventeen percent since I've been here, right? So I left that at twenty five, but now this is not a guideline. This is. In between. Anybody doing, you know, mother house, adequate shelter. You know, you guys have this much to apply for, so that would probably, they would increase their. Their requests, right, knowing that they have this much. Okay? I did increase health and wellness for the mental health, mental health piece. I went up to twenty percent. Then I decreased just a little bit. Education, because still gonna, if they're gonna take a hit. Right, we'll go, we'll go here in a second. How much they got this year? Self-sufficiency and resilience, I decreased. A little bit to two ten. Food nutrition, I actually increased. We were at twelve percent. I moved up to fifteen percent, because that's one of the top three. And then safety and justice, I, I cut that quite a bit, down to five percent. So you gotta, at least have to be a hundred, right?
So did we, sorry, my interrupt.
No, go ahead.
Did we talk about having like? An extra like five percent, like discretionary emergency? Was that really?
We, we did, and I didn't put it here when we could.
And I mean, it's, obviously, we have to reduce everything a little, so what do you all think?
I think that the assessment really got, should be guiding it, and I think the intention behind that is important, instead of having. A fund that's kind of ambiguous.
We are.
That's my, but that's one.
So do you wanna read what we spent last year? So just so they have reference.
Sure. Education and skill building. Four forty nine, seven ninety eight.
They took a, they take a hit.
Yeah. Yeah, Amy, will you take a picture of the twenty twenty six proposed and put it in the chat? Food and nutrition, two thirty six. Five eighty four.
So they're about right.
Yeah. Health and well-being, two seven nine. Oh four zero.
So they get an increase, not a whole lot, but they do get an increase.
Housing stability, one eleven, five twenty four.
That's the big one.
Which is what, yeah, which is.
Two hundred thousand dollars.
And safety and justice, one thirty nine, eight oh five.
Can you, um, one thirty nine, eight oh five, can you repeat the housing?
Housing stability, one eleven, five twenty four. Okay. And self-sufficiency and resilience, two seventy four. One seventy seven.
So they'll take a hit too.
Okay. And, okay.
Okay, so now I'm going to the next one, then we'll come back. So this one is based more on. What we, what we actually spent on, yeah, but housing should be two eleven, right? We had a major player that did not apply. And then usually got bonus, and it would've been a two eleven, right? So. This one is based more on actuals, so I increased them based on actual. I gave, for example. I gave four percent more to housing stability, which became three hundred thousand. I kept health and wellness the same at twenty percent, giving three hundred thousand. I, I still dropped education. I. I dropped self-sufficiency by a little bit, but I keep them at two twenty five, so that we have fifty thousand dollar trial. I increased food nutrition. To two fifty five, which is around where they were, right? You say two seventy something.
Nutrition thirty six, I mean, like.
Two thirty six, okay, so goes up a little bit, right, but it should, because it's their priority. It's, it's one of the top three priorities that. It's today, and then I tried to minimize the hit to safety and justice and get them at one oh five. They're still taking a hit, because we're increasing food. And we're increasing housing stability and.
Safety and justice is at one thirty nine, eight oh five.
Yes, they're gonna take a hit. Oh. Go ahead, Katie. Did you put those things in the chat?
I just. Yeah, that's great. That's super helpful. I just have a question, and maybe you can just speak to it broadly. I feel like when we left our last meeting, we were kind of, it seemed like we were. Pretty focused on the areas that were so overwhelmingly. You know, mentioned as top areas, and I'm just wondering, this feels like. It doesn't consider that as much, but rather the historical sort of approach. Can you kind of, is that, can you kind of share where that is coming from, sort of this?
So, so two things. One, I would, I would argue that we are, we are, because I've increased the areas. Where the, where the, the top three H S N A has, has called to. Even though I would, I would admit that the first one's a little bit more. But I still am increasing those areas. And two, I think the other piece, we talked about, as, as, as the board about. You know. The concern of it being too drastic of a change too immediately. So we wanna change, but we, so we could, I mean. We could put a whole bunch more into this one, this one, and this one.
Great, say which ones.
Housing, health, and nutrition, but then we would reduce everybody else much more. So this increases it, but. By a smaller amount, yet still recognizing that those are the top three. But doesn't, doesn't give the other agencies, they're all gonna take a hit, but it's a smaller hit. If that makes sense. Instead of taking larger hits, which we could.
I have a question.
Yes.
Katie, go, and once you're finished.
Yeah, I, well, I just would say, I, I kind of, I guess last time I felt like I heard a lot about. Concern around, specifically around food. Because we all were kind of discussing sort of just the current climate and how much that particular area is, is affected and. And is projected to be affected, so. I guess I'm just feeling like I hear what you're saying, but it doesn't look to me like that area. Is, has been prioritized as highly as the needs assessment and, and our last discussion. You know, and again, as. Change, but that one feels like it really didn't move.
We would use twelve percent in twenty twenty four. We're going up to fifteen or, and or seventeen now, so that's an increase of at least five percent.
And what I'm hearing is that it. Is. With the current economy and kind of what we might anticipate. That. That all things, all other things staying equal, that, that that food and nutrition, we could potentially see a really large jump and. And look at, at how we're. Prioritizing that. Okay, so the recommendation is to look at. To the potential to increase that food and nutrition. Where would that come from? Because if we're going to take it from somewhere. Where would that, where would that, we're proposing seventeen. Percent of the total funding for food and nutrition at two fifty five. At two fifty five, it was for this year, two thirty six, five eighty four. What, and historically, we spent twelve percent of the budget. We're looking at seventeen. If we were to increase that, where should it come from?
Yeah, when we're gonna cut.
Well, I have another comment, so I think when you're looking at like immediate needs, right? Education and skill building might not. Jump out as much, but if you don't put money there, you're gonna have more immediate needs the next time, right? I mean, I really think education, skill building, help people. I know this is stupid, you're a point, but I get out of this, so. They help people get out of it. I just don't know. And this is just my perspective.
That's fine.
I'm not familiar with a whole lot of programs making a big debt in that area.
I would add to that, just as you're framing this.
Sufficiency and one on one.
It's early childhood. Early childhood education, and so.
So that's different.
Unrelated, yeah, unrelated. Right. We know that if parents don't have childcare, that impacts their employment, which like, it's a, it's a ripple effect, right?
So just so you know, I, I can list off the programs that we fund in. Education and skill building, if that would help.
Yeah, yeah, we can look at, yeah.
So. On the early childhood, we have Wild Plum. We have TLC. We have the Aspen Center. We have the Friends and Family Network. We have the Basel Program for car repair and polishing. Exito.
Yeah. Hard decision.
So yeah, I mean, you have to make a tough decision, and then on the middle school, or we have the W M C A, also early childhood. On the older kids' side, we have the Y C's after-school program. Their summer camp program. We also have, I Have a Dream, and their Dreamers program that follows kids through high school. And then on the adult side, we have Open Door that does the. High school graduate, high school equivalencies for, for immigrants and.
How about health and wellness? Can you list those ones?
Yes, but nothing was one of our priorities, but mental health falls in there, but I can. We got, we think that was usually M H P. We have St. Benedict's that provides clinics to primarily people experiencing homelessness and others at the R Center. What else we have?
Therapeutic Writing Center.
We got it, we got, yes, the medicine force.
So what if we swapped the food and the health percentages to increase food and what do you put?
I feel like the top three should have been funded and, or really prioritizing them.
So it's gonna be go to twenty, it's gonna be all twenty twenty, and then we take, if you want to meet.
We would take.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking too, a lot of her life.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna draw it up, and if you take a picture, we can put, uh. Let me get this.
Yeah. Food and, food and nutrition being brought up to the top three priorities, and then, and then not, not rob from all of them. My, my perspective, not take from all of them, split them. Split it equally, so they're not.
So we're gonna take a massive hit. So we're gonna take a picture of this, Katie and, and Martha, and we're gonna put it up here in a second. So you're done, you're done here. And it goes this, and go to twenty. Okay, we're gonna go this, and it goes down to twenty. This goes down to fourteen, and this goes down to six. To make up. Does that look better, Robert?
In general, I'd like it closer to.
Okay.
Overall, because it's based on past experience.
It's based on that, and it's also based on the human numbers, on the human services need assessment.
My other problem is that I buy groceries for my home. I also have volunteered for a number of. Community things like wheels on wheels and. Working Indian Peaks, working Alliance, and other things like that. And the problem is that they're all being affected by federal. And the problem is that they're all being affected by federal fund cuts.
Yeah.
That's true.
And my view is that we're better off giving more money than we normally would to organizations because of the cuts, because of the federal cuts.
Well, there, but my argument to that, are.
That would mean fewer people than we would give money to.
Right, and, and I, the other pushback I don't give is, it's hitting everybody. It's not just hitting food by riders, the federal cuts.
And the other thing too is like, the food security, given grocery prices to what they're doing right now, I would move that for both, both more people and senior citizens and others on fixed incomes.
Yeah.
It's a problem.
Yeah, and that's what we're hearing through our other advisory boards. So the Senior Center Advisory Board is going to, um, have some sort of recommendation to council that we focus on, on food, food access and security. Um, we're hearing that from our youth advisory board also, that that's, you know, that's impacting their families.
Yeah.
And so that really goes in line with, with what you're, you're saying, and, you know, it, it, it does look to my base sense.
I'm very inclined on my, you know, experience with organizations in applying groceries.
Yep, yep. Good point.
Yeah, and I was, and so when you say health and wellness is a priority, for council or for, and the new assessment. Okay, it was one of the topics.
Maybe health was one of, and, and that's, I mean, that's, that's where it falls, right here.
Right, and as far as how that relates to, um, council priorities, they do have, um, they have used, uh, for example, marijuana tax revenue um, to provide clinical services to people living in permanent supportive housing. So it is high on their, on their radar as far as that health and wellness piece.
Okay.
It's not specifically called out in their council priorities, that, that house, um, but they have made policy moves to, to make sure that not gets addressed.
And then historically, we've only funded them two seventy-nine.
So that's an increase.
So that would be an increase. I'm kind of inclined to keep it up, I mean, a lower, just because I feel like someone had brought up a great point last time, where there's a lot of government funding delays for health and wellness and mental health. Um, a lot of the populations that are high needs, um, are most vulnerable or eligible for Medicaid, many times having access to mental health services. Now, the other question is, do the services exist, right? And that would be a Martha question, because she, that's her expertise. Um, but I'm inclined to lower that number and, and put it toward, um, maybe like food and nutrition or housing stability, but that's just my opinion.
And that's one of the needs, human services needs assessment, that, that outlined that that is a need, a need, kind of in, in several areas, so.
Well, and I think too, like, when working with families, like.
Yeah.
In my case, my rent and my food, I'm stressed out, and I, you know, my mental.
Right, it's, it's all, uh, it's all a part of a cycle, right?
Um, it's definitely part of. Yeah, it's definitely part of a cycle, and um, to not, like, divulge too much, like, I just wanna give an example of how rapid it can happen. So like, um, I wanna say, like, in the last sixty-ish days, there was that big shift where the COVID Medicaid, um, funding dipped, and that sent people off of a cliff, really. And so many people, like, couldn't refill their prescription medication. And CPS had, like, a flurry of referrals, because people were, you know, mentally, uh, their mental health had decompensated. So it became a safety issue for their kids. Um, while it wasn't, uh, like, it was something that was easily remedied once we knew about it, but we had to have access to that twenty-four hour support, because when we called to get appointments, they're setting them out in, like, May, at the, the tail end of May. And that is not sufficient, that's multiple kids in foster care, that's people in facilities that don't have any beds. Like, it's, I can't express how much, like, we're on the brink of an issue, but the current surplus, is it being met when there isn't real access to anything beyond the ER? People are, like, sitting on their seventy-two hour holds in the ER, which none of the hospital staff is, like, trained in mental health. It becomes like a very serious issue, um. So, I don't know, I, the best way I can explain is, like, it's a terrible domino effect. Um, so there needs to be some kind of access point for the crisis intervention, but also, like, I don't know what the issue is, that there isn't mental health care available sooner, because that's just a huge gap for something that, um, could, could be remedied through access of medication and access of that, um, stability point.
So Martha, do you feel like there's a robust amount of mental health programs and services available to folks? If we decrease the funding a little bit, I guess is what I wanna know from your perspective, within Longmont?
That's the, that's the hard question, because I feel like right now, there, there isn't a place for people to go. We're sending people to, like, Boulder Mental Health Partners, um, for crisis, we're sending people to Greeley. Um, like, sure, they can be assessed at the hospitals here, but it's really, like, Longmont United or UC Health. Um, and there's not a facility here.
Okay.
Everywhere has to get contracted out, so. That's.
Well, I just, I mean, I guess, I'm just going back to the, the post-its that were up last time, and mental health was one of the top two.
Yeah.
In, in every category, and it was only slightly different in a couple categories where it was like, um, I wanna say the domestic, you know, more domestic shelter, domestic violence shelter. It was like maybe slightly worded differently, but it was pervasive across the, all, every single category.
Food security, housing, like, it's kind of the chicken and egg, um, the chicken and egg, uh, question, right? Like, do people, does people's mental health suffer because of all of these, you know, lack of access to housing stability, health and wellness?
Right.
Um, or does that cause probably both?
I think both, yeah.
It's a, yeah.
Two ways.
Two-way street, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, so we'll take a pause here, and, 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 and I want to remind, there's a lot that we do with our human services funding. But the reality are that the needs that we talk about, we are a scratch
Yes.
on, on the amount of needing that's out there, right? So our, our funding is really important, and there's so much more needed that we can't provide. So, so, all to say is, like, I'm fine with whatever we wanna do, I just wanna make sure that we have that perspective in mind. Right, uh, where can we, this is one of the things that Christina and I talked about, is I'm, I'm really stressed out about this funding, because our job as the board is to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars, right? And so as we think about which programs you wanna fund, these are hard decisions you also are making. So thank you for being here and having this conversation, uh, and these are hard stuff that we're talking about.
Yeah.
Uh, somebody else have a hand up?
No, Katie just says all the more reason to concentrate funding to make a dent in something.
Yes.
Martha has her hand up, though.
Oh.
Go ahead, Martha.
Oh, I won't.
Oh, uh, she muted her, somebody muted her.
She muted us.
Okay, all right, true, go, there you go.
There we go.
Hello?
Yes.
I have, like, a severe delay on my computer. Um, I am wondering if there's an opportunity to, like, or the city managers of like us, Boulder County and City of Boulder, to come together? Because, like, some of the funding is for entities in those agencies? Is there a way for, you know, our um, administration to, like, talk to each other to try to get it so that we're not considering other agencies that are also giving out money, so that I can actually go to, like, local organizations here?
So.
I prob, I probably didn't word that very well, but is there a way to, like?
Let's talk about, first, let's talk about your first part of the question, about is, are we talking? So Christina's part of, and I'm part of, uh, there is this thing being done by a company called the Behavioral Health, uh, work, and I'm part of Workmap. And so, yes, we are having all these conversations about this. Because we also got, remember, we got, uh, funding from the opioid settlement, abatement settlements? And so there's a lot of conversations happening at the city manager level, the county manager level about this. Uh, in particular, focusing on substance use, but still overall in the mental health community.
Right.
There was, yeah, go ahead.
So for example, Martha, um, through the opioid abatement funds, we have a position funded at Children, Youth and Families um, that focuses solely on, um, on substance use and kids involved in the juvenile justice system. So it's a clinician position that we have. And then we have, um, positions funded in core, our core program, um, through, through that abatement fund. And so there is the, the conversation that, that Harold has, has had. What, so that was the first part of your question. The second part, Elie Berto was gonna, was gonna.
So the second part is, are, just to, is is there, is there coordination around funding, right? Is that kind of what, what I'm, what I heard, Martha?
Yeah, basically, because I'm just thinking, like, the money could probably go further if we're not funding, like, things that Boulder County can fund on its own, or things that, like, are based in Boulder that can, yeah.
So, so, so one, yes, we do have a funders collaborative, we meet monthly and talk about the funding. Two, Boulder, Boulder County doesn't have, and they just bid a huge cut, so they don't have a ton of funding either. Uh, the, again, it's, it's an issue that the needs are just so great that we are doing what we can.
Yeah.
Uh, at this point.
Yeah, and we continue to, um, you know, we just had a, a meeting with, um, our, our county administrator, just, you know, in general, to talk about how we might get on the same page with our, our, our funding proposals, our contracting, our, um, so definitely those, those conversations are, are, are happening.
Yeah, I think we did a better job of actually coordinating, but I agree that there's always more work to.
Always, and there's always room for improvement, yeah.
Can I add something? Um, because I was looking at this too, and I'm thinking, okay, well, we're setting the amounts, but we still have the work to do at the end to choose the agencies and how high we're gonna fund them.
Right.
And so that is gonna be the second piece of this.
Right, so you made fun of wanting to be more than, yes, yes.
And then to Martha's point, like, the county, or to Elie Berto's point, like, the county took a lot of funding from local nonprofits and, and other programs within the community so that they could stabilize and secure their programs. And so that maybe that's an aspect of something that we look at when we're looking at a county program, because now we know that their funding maybe is more stabilized, and the county's not funding those external programs. And so maybe the funding raises on those external programs raises.
We don't fund any of the hous, any of the county's housing programs at all.
Yeah, I'm thinking, like, workforce.
We don't fund any of them.
Genesis and Genesis.
We, we don't, we didn't, we didn't fund them this year.
Wait.
We, we did fund, but we funded the, the community, the, that one, we funded the farmer's market, that adds to.
So that's not a whole lot of government.
The only one that we funded is the prison vest program, but the money they took wasn't for public health, they took it for their housing program.
Okay.
So, and we don't fund any of those programs.
So I'm wondering if we, if you move Elie Berto into the changes, um, proposed, uh, and the evaluation, which I think you're getting to, would then create
Prioritize.
more prioritize and create more conversation that then it could help us modify those percentages a little bit more, if that's the direction you choose to go in?
Yeah.
That, does it work? Is it okay to jump to, to that?
I do, I, well, I do, but I also wanna, I want to, uh, address Katie's, uh, chat. Katie, you, you say in the chat about, you know, that's how we concentrate funding to make a dent, and that's true. Um, you know, the challenge there is the more you concentrate, the more you exclude others, right? And so this is, the, the, we decided not to do the cycle for the, of the lack, or the, 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 the reality of the, the volatility in the market, but we also talked about not making huge changes right away. Right, we could say, we're just gonna fund, we're gonna get rid of self-sufficiency, safety and justice, education, and just fund.
The top three.
The top three, but that, I think that would, that would, one, I'm not sure how politically viable that would be. Right, but you would have people calling council members, I think, I think we're trying to find that, that, that balance, Katie, I think you're right, we do wanna make a dent, but how do we make a dent without, and this is what I was talking to you about, what makes me nervous is how do we do without hurting everybody else too much?
Well, and, and that could be, like, some of the screening questions of, maybe we're looking at how many Longmont residents are they?
Yes.
Yes.
So, and, and that's what he, yeah.
A big amount that out of that.
That's a really good point, because, for example, that's the whole inch deep, for example, we were talking about early childhood, right? So Colorado Statewide Parent Coalition does great work, but they don't serve a whole ton of people, because they go really that mile-deep, but they walk with the family, they support the families. But they may, they may only serve forty people a year, where Wild Plum serves two hundred and thirty-five people a year, right? So we may get to those kind of conversations as well.
And to be able to really talk about, like, Colorado statewide parent coalition, um, um, they really focus on that friend, family, neighbor care, which we know more than sixty percent of children.
That's true.
Age zero to five are in FFN care across the board.
So the direct program, maybe that's.
Really weighing.
Yeah, you're exactly right.
That, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You might only serve a few families, but then those families serve. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's all very, very complicated. Yeah, Katie has her hand up. Go ahead, Katie.
Oh, I just, I, John, it's so, such a weird delay, because you're just addressing me, and then I have to put my hand up. But, um, my point is not, I'm not suggesting we concentrate any further, I just noticed that, you know, I think we now have, basically, in the, on the document, at least that I think I'm seeing, it's essentially, there are four things that have twenty percent of the funds, and then there are two things that have less. So I, I'm not suggesting per se any more concentration. The only thing I, I did notice is, and I, so, so to me, like, that's fine.
Yeah, I can say why too.
Yeah, and I'm not, uh, my only other question, though, related to that, is once you get to that eighty percent, um, and you have those other two categories, have we walked, have we, are we okay with not having any of that, like, the five percent or whatever? We talked about discretionary funding, um, for emergencies, that was my own.
I think Kathy talked about, and I think folks felt okay, but, because we haven't had it in the past, so folks felt okay with that.
Okay, got it.
But if we want to talk more about it, we can.
So I, so just to clarify, I'm not suggesting any more concentration, per se.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, but could you actually say, safety and justice going down? Can you just pull this in there?
Sure.
No, you know it.
Yes, I can tell you who's in there. So we got Internet Legal Center. We have Colorado Legal Services. We have Rocky Mountain Legal, uh, Center, we have Bridge to Justice, and we have the reentry initiative, who works, we, we put them in Safety and Justice, because they work with, um, uh, current DCs, current DLC. Uh, we could, I mean, now, here's the chance that Christina and before Christina, me and Karen always had. A lot of agencies do multiple things. Right, so it's always hard, like, we could argue that the reentry can go, either in self-sufficiency, or maybe even mental health, because they do a lot of counseling and stuff, but we put them in safety, those are hard decisions we have to make as well, at the staff level, about where we put people, but those are the major ones.
And do you know if we have access to other funds?
I'm sure they do, we, you might know what all their funding is. No, but, yeah, yeah, they have.
Like, for example, like Bridge to Justice is getting.
Well, they can fund the money from the.
Boulder.
Yeah, they can.
From the Everest program, and, but, but that serves only Boulder residents.
Yeah.
And there's a caveat, because they, I think they do support some of the evictions here in Longmont, and I'm sure that their funding for that is slim, so.
Yeah.
Just the immigration problems. I don't have any more problems, but that's, that need is, have they already skyrocketed?
Yeah. Uh, you have to be looking for a professional.
Something I was thinking too, is like, as we get into the discussion of, like, how we're gonna filter out these.
Right, I mean, sure.
I would even propose that the bookstore assigned to each priority area, maybe have a study session, be forward rating, to talk about these things, like, what is Wild? to talk about these things, like what is Wild Palm and why is it important? And that way, everybody's brains can come together and really understand that priority area.
I like that idea.
How it applies to Longmont, and then we all go into the grading with these same things in our minds.
Provide an overview of what each agency does, so what Crystal is saying, so before people, you know, go in and they sign up to, to, to review, um, or to score education and skill building, to come together as that small group, to say, and we could do it easily over teams.
Yeah.
Um, say, this is what it has traditionally funded, this is, these are the community impacts, this is who, these are long-term, number of Longmont programs. Um, and then that way, everybody is at a level, you know, you know, ground floor understanding. Um, and then it's easier to kind of take it from, I like that idea.
I love that. Yeah, I was gonna suggest something that was, that's good, let's team us up.
The question that you're asking, like, for the safety.
You could ask that.
Those are wonderful things to talk, like when they said, well, they're getting funded by Boulder, but how does that look in Monmont? And how might that affect resident's care? All those kinds of conversations are really important going into the application grading.
So.
So let's talk about the, the next.
And then do we want, so for this, we will need a vote.
Oh, true, true, true. If you're gonna step.
And we can come back to it after we talk about that, but for this, we will need a vote that we did these, and these are the priority areas. And, and, and that we're also gonna, so no longer guidelines are gonna be more prescriptive, so.
So, do we want to do that now or go through the second piece to see if that further modifies, further modifies the percentages, or are you all feeling that you're good with these percentages?
Like, we should wait, does somebody?
I would like to wait, because another thing I wanted to talk about was like the housing stability, historically, we haven't funded a whole lot. They're gonna get a lot more funding this year, and how might DFA work into that?
That's part of, that's part of three, two, three, eight.
So, so that way on that, to talk about this, and then maybe that factors.
Yep, and Amy's gonna post this next, um, chart paper in the chat for.
Sorry, I thought you guys could see the whiteboard is down.
Okay, I'm gonna exit on a whiteboard.
Yes, crystals are around for, water, we have.
If you just did chair screen here, this is a video report, what if you just did chair screen?
We tried, it doesn't, it doesn't work. That's when we gotta take pictures and put it up so people can see.
Just your screen doesn't seem like.
It doesn't like.
It doesn't like the whiteboard.
Yeah.
But it doesn't have, it's just a screen, share green option versus share whiteboard?
Uh-uh.
Oh.
Okay, there.
Alright, so Amy, Amy's gonna put the picture in the chat. Um, oh. Amy, so I wanted to go over this as well, because this is part of, even though it's not this, it, it connects, right? Because, um, so when you all evaluate, and Mark and Katie, you're, you're new to this, but when you all evaluate, um, there are a set, a set of questions and they're weighted, and there are certain things that gets forward. We can always look at those again, we have time, or we can look at them at our July or whatever meeting, we can take a look at them. But fundamentally, you all score a part of the application, staff scores a part of the application, and I score probably application. But I do have a little bit of say in the funding, a lot, a lot less than you all do, because you all can get more weight than I do.
Yes.
But it's my part, my part is still important. Um, but, what we think, what we're thinking of adding and adding a question to the application, and our partner, we told our partners, we're either fine with it, we just have other branching question for Longmont. These are the two things that we, this is the one thing we're gonna add, and then this is what, to Crystal's point, what we're talking about. So, uh, when we talked to council, um, there was a, a desire, um, yeah, for nonprofits to work closely together. And we actually been talking to Harold and others about that, and there's a lot of energy for nonprofits to do what, what we're calling resource stacking, fundamentally cost sharing.
Right, they're cut, yeah, building economies of scale.
Yeah, can we work, can we help them get IT together, can we help them get whatever, you know, HR together? We've tried, we've actually looked at health, and health is hard. Um, there's a lot of reasons, I mean, we can look at it again, but we've actually had conversations in the past about trying, that's one of the major costs that nonprofits have, is their benefits. And we're trying to see if we can find a way that we could limit those.
Yeah.
And, and some folks, and we can relook at it again, but there, I know there's been a previous staff that has looked at, you know, could we put them all in one and, and get some bids from, from health insurance companies for the economy of scale, right?
We're gonna be exploring some conversations with our local chamber to see what that might look like.
Yeah, so, so, one of the things that we're, we're, we're thinking about adding is putting a question in about how, you know, how are they working to do some of this work? And we'd have to put it out there early enough, um, so that they could do it. It might, it might not be for twenty twenty-six, maybe for twenty twenty-seven. Um, but how are they finding ways to share expenses? We had a meeting two Tuesdays ago now with the homelessness side, uh, we have fourteen providers there. Uh, it, it was adult individual, not the family, it was just adult individuals. Yeah, and so we met with them at the county to talk about this very point, is how can they, and, uh, we actually got some, we got an email from one of our friends, that they're looking with another provider, buying a building together. So there, there, there's definitely exploration happening. And so what we were thinking is, if you wanna add a question about this, that you all score one to five, that gives extra points to those folks that are exploring and doing some of it, right? You would get to judge based on their answer, whether you think it's a, it, it, yeah, what they're doing. Uh, but want to bring that before you. Then to your point, Crystal, the second thing is, your desire to honor the latest human services assessment, we could give extra points to folks that are doing mental health. So even among this, right, so when we have non-mental health providers, we could give an extra point or two, or whatever we decide, we can work on that, to folks that are doing mental health, food security, or housing stability, and that's where DFA comes in, right? Um, so, uh, we could give them five points or one to five, depending on how you think their program is delivering on these specific, um, specific areas that we want to fund. Chris, can you hear me a person?
I guess I don't see the benefit of doing that, because they're already getting that priority, it's just changing, like, if they're, they're competing against their same, like, cohort.
So yes and no, so for example, like I mentioned, in health and wellness, there are non-mental health providers in there.
Yeah.
So we would prioritize mental health even among, so we, we didn't.
Dental health, dental health, for example.
Like I said, we didn't get application potentially, but what if eventually applies next year? We would give, would give priority to those who are doing mental health.
I see, I see. And you could, th- this board could make a recommendation to be more prescriptive around, these are the, the, the agencies, so no new agencies, if you didn't apply, like, this is just ideas. If you didn't apply, well, that probably wouldn't work with some of the applications that work, but how, how do you, how do you maybe look at ways to limit kinds of applications, numbers of application, is it government entities, is it, you know, are we not gonna fund other governments? Are we gonna, you know, what does that look like? I mean, that makes sense, yeah.
Right, so before we get there, but do you understand what I mean by this? So if there's, again, there are mental health, there are health and wellness that are not mental health, but we would give, and again, I haven't thought out exactly, it could just be two points or five points or whatever we decide. When we can decide later, the question is, more fundamentally, is this something you are, including, either doing DFA, can we give them an extra points for that? Right?
I'm, I'm kind of in the same thinking, like, I'm just trying to think how, like, I'm thinking about the DFA aspect, so like, say we have an organization that does DFA, and they get the additional points, and maybe get a higher percentage toward their total that they're.
Exactly, that's how we're.
Um, then that would just go toward, at right now, based off of the funding restrictions, the, the admin cost, and.
Well, we, we.
How much of a difference is that making?
So we could say that if you're, you're given DFA, you can't use any of it for, to, for adding costs.
So, yeah, and what Katie, yeah, Katie is just, yeah, saying that she agrees broader categories, assumes they could prioritize mental health within.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what, that's what I'm suggesting.
Yep.
And safety with food security, I mean, food security is a little, is a little more, unless, I mean, we could think.
So they could just get closer to that requested amount versus other ones who are maybe not doing that work in the community.
Exactly.
Okay.
You guys okay with that?
I don't think that it would hurt.
Okay. Alright, now, we've had a lot of conversation.
I have one, one.
Go ahead.
I'm already gonna share about item one. About resource stack. The inflation, uh, wages are lacking, are way behind cost of living.
Right.
There's a lot of uncertainty about the economic future of the United States right now.
Correct.
Donations, two organizations like that are way down. To the point where they're asking people, I normally, when I volunteer for a group, I usually give to myself for money, but not folks. They either get me, or they get my money, but not folks. They're asking me for money that I'm volunteering already for the organization, we need, they're in trouble.
A lot of them are, yes.
And, and their, their ability to raise money from donations is way down, it's getting more and more difficult.
Right.
So they're depending in a great part on us to help, help them more than donations. It's not like you can run out and get more money in donations.
Okay.
And I don't know how they would, how we could help them find ways to share expenses when they, they don't have any income to share.
So Christina and I.
More about the human component.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to do, we're, like I said, we, like Tina said, we are working with the chamber, and we're gonna be talking to businesses to say, you know, what could we do, maybe a bookkeeping, or maybe, how can we help? By the way.
Building insurance.
Right, so.
They all go with this specific company, could they get a, a, a.
A discount.
A discount.
Yeah, and I'll give you a quick example, only we've already done. Um, so Next Light has created a nonprofit's rate. So that's less than what they would charge a regular business. So that's something the city could do, and we created, so we, we're already in the process of it, but you're right, there's, there's no question that, that nonprofits are in trouble, and, and there's, and, and, and you also have the responsibility, again, this is, this is the big challenge and balance that you all walk, is that you're also a steward of, of this funding, right? And so, yes, you may wanna help everybody, but is that the best way to help, but use this funding? It may be, I don't know, I mean, this is the challenge, right?
I'm, I'm doing calculations for DFA right now.
Yeah, so there's three hundred thousand in public stability.
So let me tell you what the city of Boulder does for its residents. Now, granted, we're not the city of Monmont, and I don't have the same, we don't have the same tax base. But just kind of like along the same lines, I know that they, they fund the key family's house programs.
Five hundred thousand.
Which is similar to.
Home study.
Home study.
Yeah.
Um, and it's, and they spend five hundred thousand dollars in DFA, direct financial assistance to families and to families, actually with children.
Yes.
Is what that program's geared toward. Although the organization does have extra funding for seniors and, and some more kind of safety net stuff for those other groups. Um, and families can come in and get up to three months of one thousand dollars toward assistance. Now, granted, I don't know how the home study.
They can get up to five thousand now, we moved it up.
They can get up to five thousand now. So I'm just thinking, like, and I'm just gonna throw numbers out there, right? And so this is really meant for those families living paycheck to paycheck. Something happens, like, they need new tires, kid breaks their leg, or had missed work, um, that this family could go and tap into that funding to help them with their rent temporarily. Um, and it's, it's, it's beneficial in that way, and there's a need for rental assistance. My concern is a part of that, is, is there a manpower to distribute that assistance? Could these programs distribute that assistance, and does this funding request that they have to spend it within X, Y, Z date? And if we did like a hundred thousand of this, how would it look historically we did, um, housing, housing a hundred and eleven? So that if we did housing and stability, we could up it two hundred thousand.
For, so I'm getting confused now.
And do like a hundred thousand DFA. So it's.
So we get three hundred thousand. Yeah, take three.
So we've never told them, I mean, you wanna be prescriptive, I mean, you, we've never told them that you have to use it. So mostly a hundred and eleven goes for, for, for the in-between, it helps cover their life skills.
Yeah.
Staff and people that could ever go.
The key managers.
To get them housed and all that, yeah, yeah. That's where it's primarily gone. So are you arguing that we force them to apply for DFA?
I say, could we, well, two things, could we say DFA is at two hundred thousand this year, and then create this, or I'm sorry, not DFA, housing stability is, is raised, so apply for the admin cost, but could we have a DFA application separate, or would it be included?
I think it has to be included, I don't think you can do a separate application.
So encourage that, not separate application, but category, or maybe, I don't know, I don't know how would you.
I think, cause of a part of the way those categories, you could put it as part of our housing stability category, and you could encourage them to do it. But as you, uh, you, because of the way applications now, you couldn't set, unless they wanted to apply for a separate program, if they wanted to, they could.
And that would be more kind of work.
Yeah, I mean, it's fine, I think it would be.
What do you guys think, and what do you think, Elie Berto, Christina?
You know, I think when it comes to direct financial assistance, again, it goes back to the need is so great that really, in bigger picture, what would that hundred thousand do?
So if we did like, like, we know that they can help with up to five thousand. So one hundred thousand divided by five thousand.
Twenty families, twenty families.
Twenty families. That would have housing security.
Um, I wouldn't, I wouldn't push back on that.
Plus.
Not housing security, they have the rent paid for a month.
For a month, yeah.
Or a couple of months.
Maybe a couple of months, yeah, but what happens next month?
It's, it's the old, the.
But it helps, it helps the, the emergency versus them not getting the assistance, falling further behind and being at risk of homelessness. Right? And so, so, and it's, there, it's thirty fam, it's a hundred thousand on top of what's already in the community. So, so yes, does that alone help? Probably not, right? But in addition and in combination too, I don't know.
We, what I, I think we, we can say, if the board is just willing, I wouldn't put a number amount. What I would say is that we are not gonna allow DFA and then let the agency tell you how much they want to do. So like, for example, the architect says, we're gonna ask for a hundred fifty thousand, and we want a hundred twenty-five for DFA. That's fine, then you guys judge merit on that application.
So just open it up for DFA.
If, if this is what, if the board, we, we had, so just, you've just, we have not, because there was this weird state law. But when I talked to Karen, she said, that's how we didn't do it, but we can, so now we can do it. If you want to, then I would say, then it's really, you could add, you could let the agencies choose how they want to use. Yes.
Is there any research showing the impact of the, of the difference, like?
So, yes, our research, right? And I, I was looking to you, uh, but it's a little bit different, like, this home study is a little longer, it's, it's, it's got, it, so what we pay for.
The longitudinal.
Yeah, what we pay for home study is not just a DFA, we took, so, like, Crystal, we pay for the program staff to do that long-term management.
Which is huge.
Yeah, and so we do have, so I, I think I read it to you all in March, I did the home study, I did, on the thirty-eight, thirty-six, at the, at the exit, we're still some three or four months later, we're still in their housing.
Which the combination, so to your question, like, I recently got promoted to a position that was historically with the county, but they moved it to the nonprofit, because studies show families are better off, not only with the case management, but also with some money to back it to help the emergency need at hand, right? So, family can go to you all day and say, I need resources, and you can provide all the case management that you can, but if you can't put out the fire of that urgent need at the moment, like paying their rent so they can stay housed, then what point is that, you need the combination. Could we do that? Could we say you'll be retired if you have that? Cause it seems like that's what Memphis, those synergists.
So we already do that with home study. Um, and.
And how much do we give home study?
Two hundred and twenty-six thousand.
Two twenty-six, okay.
And so, I, I don't know the breakdown, like, how much that goes for, um, the staff, the staff person, I would call it admin, it's not really admin, it's program. Um, and then the rest goes to, um, primarily, um, DFA, so like, this past year, we didn't spend all of it, the year before, they spent twenty-eight thousand more than they had. So, they have.
How many families were there?
This year was thirty-eight, the year before was forty-five. When I say this year, it'd be twenty twenty-four, sorry, so it's a good clarity. When I say this year, it'd be twenty twenty-four, sorry, so to get clarity, because we don't know how many guys are going to use here. But because we've increased the amount, there's gonna be less families in twenty twenty-five. Because we're giving out five thousand, so we, so we probably have like twenty-five to thirty, so. You've had it to forty-eight families that we've helped. So.
So and and I think you're right, like I think we can open it up and say, hey. If the funding is available for DFA, and organizations can determine, like my organization for, my. I get paid through a grant to the CDE, see the Colorado Department of Early Childhood, they pay for the admin. Work, which opens up more money for DFA within the organization, so they can come to the table and they.
Just really quick, so let's let's get to, she, Katie agrees on letting agencies apply, she feels like we're in the weeds on our objectives for the meeting. Um we're broader, and we have about forty-five minutes.
Yeah, so I think if the, if fundamentally, the board is fine with DFA, but then figure it out.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Okay, we'll let them figure it out, all right? Okay. Moving on, and maybe coming close to an end. But I do need a vote. Mark, you've been pretty quiet, so I'm gonna make sure you, are you, are you following, you're good?
Yeah, no, I'm I'm good, I was a little, I was a little uh not confused, but. Processing on number two. At the, because that I think is a little bit more detail about how that fits into the big picture and all that stuff. Because, okay, they're already mental health. I was processing through that, and I think after the conversation, I'm I'm good with that now, now that I understand. Okay, it just kinda gets a little convoluted.
It does, yeah.
Three priorities, and we're already prioritizing three priorities, and then the priorities within the priorities.
Right.
I get, I get those questions, I understand that, but it's the second one, I was like, okay, that's all.
Okay.
Other, other agencies.
Yeah, I think I'm, I'm good.
Okay, so Mark this time taking a comment, we'll wait for her. And then uh she brings up another question, if not, then I'm gonna ask about. At least with this part. This stuff we can have.
It might just be easier for me to chat, to talk, because like, I think my brain just wants to simplify it of like. And I think it's because, you know, my, one of my kids is a, is a senior, so she's like applying. For various scholarships, and those have like a dollar amount, so like when you click it, you know what you're trying to achieve. You're trying to get access to the specific amount of money. Like, I almost wonder if there's a way to do it like that, so that we don't get caught up in all these like calculations and. This one is higher and that one's lower, it's like, if certain agencies that are smaller, you know, they're gonna reach for that five thousand dollars, or they're gonna reach for that fifteen thousand dollars. But like, I don't know, I guess my brain just wants to simplify it some way.
Well, I think, I think one, I think we have simplified it in a way, because we've never told an agency how much money we have in that priority area.
But we can be more prescriptive and specific.
So now we can say, we're gonna have this amount of money, like to your point about scholarships. In the past, if you, if you're treating this scholarship, you'd be like, hey, if you're to see a wellness scholarship. I have no idea how much we have, go ahead and apply. Now we can say, if you're in health and stability, we have three hundred thousand dollars. Figure that, you're competing with others for three hundred thousand dollars.
Up to.
Up to.
Yeah, up to three hundred thousand, yeah. And we could have more, I'm just, this is just a number, I'm just throwing out there now. But we, I I think, I think we have simplified, could we simplify it more, potentially, yeah, but I think at this point. What I need is more than a broader level, yes, this is the way we wanna go, and then if you want more work, we can always do more work.
I think that that answers Katie's question, if we're, if if they can, we're gonna be able to tell. The agencies that are applying under that category, all of that category, you have a, you know, you're eligible for up to three hundred thousand, that's better than twenty percent of the one point five and all this other.
Yeah.
Jazz.
Well, now, the only caveat there that I want to tell you all, is that Christina and I don't get to know how much we have. Until after the application is out. Because of the way the long line.
We're hoping it doesn't go down this year.
Yeah, we, but we don't know because of the way the budget process works, Christina and I don't get a figure. Until either July or August, and we've already put out the application, but I can give general.
Guidelines.
Yes, I can say, if we were to get one point five million, these are the numbers that we have.
Right, and we can put that in the application, like we just as a disclaimer, if anything else to say, these are projected, subject to change exactly.
Right, because we don't know, we, like, we don't get till July or August when we get our final number. And I'm hoping it'll be more, fingers crossed, our economy does okay.
You're close enough with the disclaimer, thanks, Katie.
We will know. As a, as a board. Before July, August, September, or whatever, what kind of what we're.
Before you start scoring, we'll know what the.
Yes, that three hundred becomes two ninety-eight, five hundred.
Exactly, or it becomes three fifteen.
Or three hundred, or hopefully three fifteen.
Yeah.
Are you folks asking council to either secure the occurring amount if it goes down?
No, because it, yeah, we we've never have done that before, and there are other. Like just across the board, when you look at the bigger picture, I don't know that.
I'm just, I'm just fingers crossed that we keep our three percent.
Yes.
I, because it's, it's, it's hard for the city.
There always is discussions about, and you know, and Harold is clear on on these priorities, but. You know, there's been discussions in the past, you know, do we need to decrease that three percent a little bit? No, so we can increase.
Okay, so. All right, so, have we answered everybody's questions about the proposed? Percentages for twenty twenty-six, any more discussion on that? Okay, then madam, madam chair.
Okay. All right, do I have, um, how do you want me to do it?
The proposed priority areas and percentages.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve the proposed priority area and. Um adjusted percentages listed there on the wall.
I want to.
Okay, okay.
Can you? Can motion, do I have a second?
Also, one second.
All in favor? Great.
Martha, Katie, they both.
They'll raise their hands. Yeah, they both raised their hands.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, so we're, so these, I'm gonna, this is, so this is it, this is for twenty twenty-six, right, this is it. These are twenty-six, these are our. These updates, these are our twenty twenty-six. And because we're, they're gonna be denied, just, they're just not guidelines anymore, they're more prescriptive, this is what we have.
Locking it in, exactly.
Yes.
Um and so then what we'll go back to counsel with is a recap of the work that we did here. Really focusing on that model number one, talking about, um you know, the change condition being the economy over the last. Five months, um and um. And uh that we still at some point in the future will look at kind of that three-year funding cycle, but now is not the time. And kind of the alignment with the human services.
Okay. Thank you for the work. And we'll come back to this one, I just wanted to get a general, like, yes, keep working on this, but I'll come back to it in May or June. Uh to do some more work on that, okay?
Great, all righty.
All right, uh what's next on the agenda, I think I I had one more thing on. Oh, meeting times.
Oh, what is the, oh, you're on it, yes, Katie, um yeah, meeting times.
The question that we have is, do you all wanna start earlier than seven? Or is seven good for you all?
I'm holding.
Yes, please, Katie says, yes, please.
You wanna start earlier? Is that what I'm getting? Katie wants to start earlier, okay. It doesn't matter.
I'm here from like nine in the morning till nine at night. Seven is late, I'm exhausted at the end, Martha says. So what, what time, does somebody wanna propose a time and we'll go from there?
Because then we got, then we gotta make, you gotta talk to Dawn and the folks who are there, uh. Amy.
City clerk.
You gotta talk to the clerk about changing it, so.
Yeah, I'm just making sure that those, I'm sure the.
I'm fine with six.
Six.
Yeah, I think it was six o'clock.
Okay.
Six o'clock, six, Martha, Katie.
All right.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so we approved.
We have both.
H C I know.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we need to vote for it.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve moving the meeting time for the Health and Human Services. Board meetings from seven to six P M?
I second. Need to move, need to move it.
Okay, Kathy and Robert.
I'm a second.
All in favor? Great, approved.
All right, so.
Any, oh, and then number five, we have the site visit report from the.
Well, so yeah, so for, for our new, our new, our new board member, so I go out, and I'll divide, and Mark's coming with me to one, which is great. Um I go out and do these site visits, um and I just get more qualified listeners, and um. I could do a desk audit with them where I check all of their paperwork and stuff, and. You know, they're, they're, they're a pretty small agency, they did not have a lot of stuff, and we talked through it, and we feel really thankful for. You know, me showing, you know, pointing out the things that they're missing, like. They have like fifteen drivers, but they don't really have a personnel policy. And I was like, hell, you know, you might wanna think about getting with the personnel policy, because what if something happens?
What do they do again?
So, so qualified listeners provide free medical transports for veterans, you, you guys, and we didn't fund them, you funded them at five thousand dollars or three thousand dollars, not a whole lot. Um.
They're pretty new, right?
They're pretty new, um and so he has served forty-three clients so far from Longline. Um and in other words, he's taken forty-three clients to their, their, their documents of residence. And that all under self-sufficiency, uh helping people with transportation, getting them to where they need to be. Um what they primarily do is besides the providing. Providing the transportation. All of their volunteers are vets themselves, and so they do, they're called qualified listeners. Because the idea is, as they're driving them, they are checking in with them to make sure that, you know. Mental health and all that, that they're doing well, all that kind of stuff. Um and you know, what they're trying to do now, my only concern with them is they're, 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 they're small, but they're growing fast. And so like, they've actually furnished a couple of of veterans' apartments, and I'm like, you know, that's great, and there's agencies that already do that, so I connected them with Home Ahead. We also.
Scale, right.
We also, we also funded, provides furnishing for people who's, you know, moving into places and stuff.
And Home Ahead is actually gonna look, if you remember from the grant here, the grant hearings, they're gonna look at tapping into um. Uh sustainability funding, um because of like the recycled nature of the work that they're doing, and the executive director thinks that there's. That's gonna really open up their opportunities, so hopefully they'll grow even more.
So all to say, um and we, we do this, again, I'll do this every month, I'll bring you a new one, um I just met with um. I didn't have time to put it on the agenda, uh the Boulder Optistic Society, which again, he's funded, funded first one, but they had an interesting conversation with them. Um. Qualified listeners is a growing organization, they. Have a lot of work they need to do on getting that organizational infrastructure in place. Um any policies and procedures, they need, you see a lot of things, but they're, they're, they're hearts and their everything, they're doing good work. Um they challenged him for, and if they get funded again in three years, and we do this again, I, and then I wanna make sure that you guys have volunteer handbooks. You know, driver handbooks, because most of the stuff they do is driving, you know, it's like, what happens, who's insurance to go on, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Would that be like open for maybe, not exactly resource sharing, but like, are there other organizations we could point to to look at there?
For some reason, because you started.
I pointed them to cultivate, but they said they already, they have, they already have a relationship with them, so I don't know at what level.
I would just get their. Policies and procedure manuals and change it for themselves.
Yeah, yeah, I could, I could talk to them about that. Um so. So that, that's my, that's my site visit report.
Thank you, I really like that too, because they get in contact with other vets, and sometimes resource sharing can happen through that. Right, because it's really hard to access resources for vets.
Yeah.
Um and some vets may have access educational resources or housing, or, oh, you could just do this, you know, you go and do this, and. So I really like that kind of one-on-one contact, someone who's kind of experienced, is pretty stabilized, has transportation, they can get some direction and input. So that's always nice, I like that aspect of that program, because I don't see it in any other.
Okay. And that's my report.
Awesome, all right, um moving on to agenda item number six. Other business, any other business? No? All right, then do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move re-adjourned.
All right, I have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second? Beautiful, all in favor? Oh, Martha, are you raising your hand, or you?
Oh, I was, I was wanting to adjourn.
Okay, all right.
Thank you so much for giving up your Saturday morning with us, and 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 great job with hard choices. And and we're gonna see how it works out this year, um. But I think we honored the the Human Services Needs Assessment, and I think you all did really good work, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your work, elegant, also for preparing these meetings and to kind of help us have that insight. And and overlook the kind of how it works and. What we did last year and how that fits in, and Christina as well, thank you.
All right, well, have a great rest of your Saturday.
All righty, bye.
You can stop the recording.
Thanks for the.
March.
Yeah.
Happy Easter to those of you who celebrate.
What?
Happy Easter to those of you who celebrate.
I celebrate every holiday. I love celebrations.